11th, 2024, Meeting of the Mayor and Council. I'd like to call on Councilman Carroll to lead us in prayer, followed by the pleasure allegiance. Please stand.
Goodness gracious. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with humble hearts and very thankful for all the blessings you continue to provide to each and one of us, especially to our city. We ask that you continue to put your protection on our first responders and to our men and women in the Air Force and military. Be with the citizens, be with us as a whole, help us do our job well. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you've had time to review the minutes from the May 14th, 2024, May 28th, 2024, special call meetings. Are there any additions or deletions? The minutes are approved by affirmation. All right. So we'll move to our public hearing. Consideration of ordinance to rezone a total of 3.21 acres from conservation and estate agriculture to heavy industry, as requested by the Valdosta-Lowens County Airport Authority. Matt Martin, planning director, will present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protem. There are three public hearing items on the agenda from the planning commission. The first two are a couplet of annexation and rezoning. As we have done in the past with annexations and rezonings, we can combine it as one public hearing, one discussion. When it does come time to vote, we need a motion and vote on the rezoning first, which is DA 08, and then secondly, then the annexation, which is DA 09. So together, this property comprises 3.21 acres. It is owned by the Valdosta-Lowens County Airport Authority. It is on the south end of the airfield, fronting Madison Highway. Currently, it is in the county zone. They split between conservation and estate agriculture. The proposal is to rezone that to heavy industry M2. As you look at the zoning map on the screen and in your packet, all the airport authority, our airport property is M2, so this would make it consistent. Character area is also split currently between a neighborhood activity center, which we've seen from time to time, and one that we do not see very often, which is TCU. That stands for transportation and communication utilities. The proposal is to alter the character area for part of the property so that it's all TCU, just like all of the rest of the airport property. Aerial image, this is taken just a couple of years ago when there used to be trees on the property. Several years ago, this was a vacant house. Airport Authority acquired it to add it into their airfield. The house has since been demolished. The trees have been cleared. The property has been fenced in as part of the airfield, and they have installed the emergency gate off of Madison Highway, which gives them another means of access to the south end of the airfield. Surveying your property shows the details of the fence, the inlet that leads to the emergency gate. See views of the subject property, fences installed, a grassed area just like the rest of the airfield. This is looking southward toward the south end of their bordering fence. The view northward of Madison Highway, diagonally across the street, I think this is Victory Baptist Church, which is the closest land use nearby. And so before you is both annexation and rezoning. Planning Commission reviewed this at their meeting on June 24th. They found it consistent with the conference plan. It stands for exercise of zoning power. They're recommending approval. But note to this also, in your packet is a copy of the notification letter of the annexation that we sent to Lowens County. That starts a 30-day review process where we notify them of the annexation, what the proposed rezoning is going to be, the proposed changes to the character area, and also the proposed change to add this property to the SDS Utility Service area for the city. And they have raised no objections to those. So without, we'd gladly answer any questions if we have.
Counsel, y'all have any questions for Matt?
May, we have the rezoning. The first motion and vote is to rezone, and then if that's successful, then we do motion and vote to relax after public hearing.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Would anyone, this is a public hearing, so this is open for the public to be able to come up and speak in favor of or against. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this request? If so, come up and state your name and address for us. All right, seeing none. If anyone would like to speak against the request? All right, seeing none as well. Counsel, I'll turn it over to y'all to take action.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to accept our vote to rezone the total of 3.21 acres from conservation and estate agriculture to heavy industry as presented.
We got a motion, got a second. All right, all in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. All right.
Mayor Protem.
Yes.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the annexation.
Okay.
Sir.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right.
I'm sorry, we're just looking at something.
You got a question?
No, I didn't raise my hand, but I was.
Okay, cute, okay. Okay, all right. So let's do this one again. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. Okay, Adam C., consideration of an ordinance to rezone, 0.4 acres from single-family residential to office professional, as requested by Lawrence Thomas. Matt Martin, planning director, will present.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is property located at 1611 North Patterson Street. Currently, it's owned, single-family residential, R10. They are proposing office professional, OP. As you look and see the zoning pattern and where it is located, this is to the northeast of the BSU main campus, diagonally north of the intersection of Patterson and Georgia Avenue. The OP zoning, you see next to them, that is the United Way Office Building on Patterson. It's been there a number of years. You see most of the pattern on the east side of North Patterson, these residential zones. North of there, you get more into the mixture. They're proposing OP, just like their neighbor. It is currently a single-family residence that's been fully renovated. They're wanting to have the option of marketing the property for professional office, and hence the request for OP zoning. Character area is one that is similar color to neighborhood activity center, but it is different. This is institutional activity center, and it has to do with the BSU main campus. We see this around the BSU property as well as South River Medical Center. And the properties immediately abutting get into the same character area because they are land use-wise dominated by those large institutions. Aerial image, you see the old urban floors, rooftops of houses nearby. This is in the local historic district in Brookwood North, historic neighborhood. In your packet is a copy of the existing site plan and survey, shows the location of the existing building, gravel parking area behind them, and then a proposed site sketch of what a parking lot might hold. The only point of discussion is really about how to transform the single-family residence into a professional office under current code. The feature that's important to note is their driveway onto North Patterson is one shared driveway entrance for both properties. It splits immediately as you leave the street into one lane that goes back into the United Way property, another lane that is their driveway for the house. But to use it for non-residential purposes needs to become a two-way drive. The United Way property is grand publican. They have an exit onto the alley behind them, but to convert this property over to non-residential use, they will need to upgrade the driveway and install a parking lot. The two property owners have been in discussion already about the idea of doing a shared two-way drive right down the property line into a shared parking lot in the back. And really, if the time comes, it becomes a matter of working out those details. OP zoning allows single-family residents or professional office, so it gives them the choice either way. Photograph subject property, this is the building, as you see it from North Patterson. This is their one-lane driveway into the backyard. And as you walk back toward the back, it opens up into the gravel area behind the house, and there's the exit gravel drive toward the alley behind. The United Way building to the south with their one-lane A driveway on the other side of the property line. And then the view down Patterson Street toward the BSU main campus, and then the northward view of Patterson, and then the house directly across the street. At the work session, I called your attention to these two pictures. This is 4:00 in the afternoon, albeit on a Saturday, but notice not one vehicle has been seen either direction, and I don't think that has ever happened before. But interesting in the photos, I wanted to point that out to you. To the north is what looks like a vacant lot. It's actually the side yard to that house, which is a historic residence. I believe it's one of the old Strickland homes from many years ago. So with this one, this is just rezoning. Planning Commission reviewed it at their meeting on June 24th. Found it consistent with the conference plan. It stands for exercise of zoning power, which is there in the packet, and they are recommending approval by unanimous vote. Glad to answer any questions if we have.
Counsel.
I have one question. Just want to ask, Counsel, although it would be changing to the date to the same result as it's made, would this be considered something like squat zoning? Because it's just that one property that you're.
It's a judgment call. You've got OP next to it, you've got OP and RP, combination of patterns to the north. The area is already a mixed zoning pattern. In my view, it's not completely out of character with what's around it zoning-wise or land use-wise.
No, not that it is out of character, just because I'm just wondering if you change that to squat.
I would say if there was not already the OP property next door, that would enter the picture a little more strongly. That we would be starting something over on that side of the street that's not already there, but it's already next door, so it helps. The counter side is we're taking an existing spot and making it bigger. That would be another way to look at it. And if you read through the details of the cover page, I get into comparing zoning and land use, even though you see R10 on that side of Patterson, as you look at the uses there, a lot of it's BSU uses, institutional uses, and even offices. One thing that's not showing is on the other side of the United Way is a professional office building. It's been there for 40-plus years. It's owned R10, but it's a professional office. One of the little trivia details on that, it's back in the 1980s, the city allowed a professional office in R10 with a conditional use approval. Or back then, they called it special exceptions, but that was 35 years ago. But that's how that other office got there.
I just want to.
It's a very, very good question.
All right, any additional questions, Counsel? All right, this is a public hearing, so we'd like to open it to the public as well. Would anyone like to come and speak in favor of the requests? Please state your name and your address.
Lawrence Thomas, 4601 Blackwater Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. We purchased this property from Miss Strickland for the sole purpose of renovating it for the potential use of either residential or office professional. There was some confusion as to whether it was listed as office professional. We didn't find that out until after we got into the project itself, but being that the United Way was next door and there's other professional offices, we wanted to market it as both. So we met with the Historical Society, and we went through all that process, and we brought it up to code, and we brought it up to the historical requirements. And so we would just like the opportunity to be able to market it either way. It's a tremendous area. They're not building any more real estate across the state in person, so that's why we did it. Appreciate your consideration.
Appreciate you, thank you. Anyone else would like to come and speak in favor of this request? Seeing none? Would anyone like to come speak against the request? Seeing none as well? Counsel, I'll turn it over to y'all.
Mayor Protem, just for clarification purposes, since the property owners go forward, it's talking about using it either residentially or office professional. OP would not allow a residential use, correct?
A single-family residential is a permitted use in OP.
It is, okay.
It is.
Just want to be clear with that.
As long as it's one residence, not duplex, not apartments, OP would allow, but it does allow single-family residence.
I just want to be clear with that.
Okay. All right. Counsel, action?
Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the request as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. Thank y'all. All right, so move on to ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages, Article 2, licenses, and Article 3, operations of the City of Valdosta Code ordinances, as it pertains to certain provisions for the downtown Valdosta Entertainment District. Kim Hughes, Main Street Manager, will present. And I do want to add that this is our first reading, and there will be a second reading and a vote held at our next council meeting.
Thank you. Lady here, Protem, Counsel, thank you so much. Just a little bit of history, in April of 2021, the alcohol ordinance was amended to bind and add provisions to the downtown Valdosta Entertainment District, which allows the off-premise consumption of alcohol in the defined area of the DDED. Following year, there was a discussion and proposal from downtown property owners and businesses to amend and to actually allow beer-only establishments in the area and to exempt the food service requirements. In September of 2022, the council did amend the alcohol ordinance to accept these provisions for the DDED and the wine, for wine-only and beer-only establishments. So now there's currently discussions and a proposal from the downtown business owners and property owners to add distilled spirits or liquor to this exemption. Do you want me to go on and talk a little bit about where the changes will be?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so if you look at Chapter 6, so that's under the Article 2 where your logins are, you see red lines. Those are kind of, there's two things going on. There's a cleanup of language, there was some repetitiveness, and then some clarifying of the language. So if you look in A, where it says DDED exemption, you'll see that there's cleanup of language and correcting some things and making it more clear. This would also add the 150 feet between said businesses. So if you have one open here, it would need to be 150 feet from another same established business. It wouldn't be, it could be a restaurant in between that, or retailer just be side by side with two of those businesses. Clean up the language on B as well. You'll see that there's a lot of red lines there. And C, if you look, the new C, so 3 goes away. That was like 1,850 square feet of storage, you know, for the wine. And I think also you'll see that N is cleaned up from the retail taco establishment. Kind of the quick and dirty. Are there any questions?
So when you say you can't go to one location, then this location is what you're removing?
No, I apologize. No, I apologize. That's for the opening of the establishment, the 150 feet, is that what you're asking me about? Yeah, that would be just like, let's just say we had two new businesses. Business A has established themselves, and Business B is like, I'd like to move next door. That wouldn't be an option. They'd have to move at least 150 feet away on either side of that particular establishment.
So what you're saying is that if there's two bars, they cannot be side by side, but if there's a bar and a restaurant, they can be.
And it could be two bars, or a restaurant sandwich between the two bars. It just gives a little bit of a buffer, sort of, between establishments.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. There is no change in the off-premise movement. That stays the same.
One thing I would, Counsel, would like to bring to y'all's attention to just think about between now and next meeting is that the curfew right now is, I guess, for, is 2:00 AM, as far as like the businesses closing down. Am I correct on that, Matt? Where's Matt at? Is it 2:00 AM?
2:00 AM.
Yeah. Yeah. So then you have the brunch bill that we've passed, which has been very well for our restaurants and stuff, that allows them to open as well on Sundays. I believe it's at 10:30, if I'm not mistaken, on that one, too.
That one, I'm not sure.
10:30.
It could be 11:00.
Yeah. So I'm saying that to say, if we do have the potential of bars coming in or a nightclub that decides to come in, I mean, if they decide to come to this area, we might want to just think about, you know, how do we, how do we handle those situations of a nightclub wanting to stay open to 2:00 AM in the morning? You know, if we want to put some restrictions on it, if it's a bar establishment, maybe it closes down at 12:00. I'm just throwing something out here for y'all to just think about. You're more into the restaurants and bars and all that stuff, too. And I know, so you might want to, so I'm just letting y'all know, we might, y'all might just want to just be thinking about how we want to handle that, just in case we do get that.
So what you're saying, if we pass this law, I mean, this ordinance, it is 2:00 AM, and it serves as alcohol, but it's 2:00 AM, ending the serving on Sunday at the 11:00 AM?
Yeah, according to the brunch bill. Yes.
To 11:00 AM. What time, Sunday, 11:00 AM to what time? Still 2:00 AM?
Midnight.
I mean, midnight, okay, so midnight sometime.
Yeah. Right now, currently, our, most of our restaurants normally close down around 10 to 11:00. I think downtown showstool may stay open till midnight, I think, more than two nights during the week. So right now, we don't have that issue. I'm just saying if we, if it does come up, we might just want to, you know, we can amend it at any time later on, but I'm just letting y'all know, it's easier to do it now than later.
Are we in taco? Are we in taco down there?
No.
Oh, I just wanted, I mean, you know, I just wanted to make sure.
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
No.
Yeah.
So we have time to think about this.
Oh, yeah, 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 we got another reading next council meeting. Yeah, and that's when we'll vote on it, too. So any changes is when we got to do what we're going to do then. Yeah. Any other questions for Kim?
I have one other question. What street exactly is downtown?
So I'm glad you asked that because I missed that portion. Matt has also included a map that gives you a clearly defined, and it would be in the ordinance, but just kind of a quick and dirty would be north to Magnolia, south to Martin West Key. You're looking west at Tunes, and then east to Lee, but it also includes the Arts, Turner Arts Center, as well as Georgia Beer. That's just kind of a dirty one. Yeah, but it's in the packet, and very, very well defined. And that way, I think it'll also help people understand where that perimeter, like where those lines are. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have biz contracts agreements and expenditures. Consideration of resolution to authorize the adoption and execution of a facility encroachment agreement between the City of Valdosta and CSX Railroad for the installation of a new 20-inch diameter water main. Jason Barnes, Utilities Director, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
Will present.
Mayor Protem and Counsel, good evening. This is consideration of the resolution to authorize the adoption and execution of facility encroachment agreement between the City of Valdosta and CSX Railroad for installation of a new 20-inch diameter water main across the railroad right away on the west side of Inter Perimeter Road. The city is extending the 20-inch diameter water main along Inter Perimeter Road to serve the industrial customers on the east side of the City of Valdosta. The industrial industry to be served by the extension is Project Forge, which is the Walmart Dairy Product Processing Facility, and the city engaged level engineering associates to design this water main. The final engineering design requires installing a new 20-inch diameter water main on the west side of Inter Perimeter Road. So this is just a facility encroachment agreement pertains only to the utility installation across the railroad right away. CSX Railroad will require permit fee of $4,000 for this facility encroachment and utility installation. The staff recommends the approval of this facility encroachment agreement and the permit fee in the amount of $4,000 so that necessary water main installation can be completed at the right of way across. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? All right, I'm opening y'all up to y'all for a motion.
Protem, I'd like to make the motion if it is stated.
All right, all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank y'all. All right, local funding and requests. Consideration of request to approve the proposed community development block grant application, annual action plan for fiscal year 2024. Anitra Riley, Neighborhood Development and Community Protection Manager, will present.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm seeking approval for the annual action plan. I came before you March 21st, 2024, seeking approval of the activities and the approved that I am here now to tell you the funding amount that the city has received this year. So on May 18th, 2024, we received a letter from HUD stating that the city has received That's a slightly $1,807 more than would be at last year. The activities are program administration at $126,406. Housing, $435,627. Public services, $60,000, and economic development is $10,000. Total, $632,033. Staff has written many approval of the annual action plan. We have to take new questions.
Counsel, y'all have any questions?
Yes, sir.
That's my house. You're good.
With this, have you been also be asking us for additional amounts for the payment payouts for housing and the banners?
Housing is $435,627. I have the email you sent yesterday. Oh, well, that is different. That's going to be different. That, that is for the policies that you adopted in 2018.
I'd raise that limit for 10 to something.
Yes, sir. I want to, what I want to do is come before you, when proposals come, contracts that we have for these merchant roof repairs or any of the housing, so you can look, you adopted in 2018, the cost of labor and material has increased. So I want your input on how we can move forward with that.
Counsel, any other questions for Anitra? All right, turn it over to y'all.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to approve this as presented.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. All right, this is the part, we have citizens to be heard. Portion of the meeting, we ask that you come forward and state your name and address so that we may have that for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to Counsel as a whole, and do not attempt to engage individual members of the Counsel in debate. It is the Counsel's policy to follow through with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address, the Counsel designate one spokesperson to represent the group of their comments and their comments. Again, this will ensure that others have time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to be heard?
Yes, I'm George Ross, 504 Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. Mayor and Counsel, we have two radio stations, 105.9 FM and 2.1, that is concerned to some citizens in Valdosta, not only the black community, but the white community. I was called a white individual, and he's a professor from DSU. And he asked, he didn't ask me for my assistance, but after he explained to me what it was, I had no alternative but to lend my hand. Things on the Morning Drive show, and you all visit, frequent that program. The used term does offend many blacks and white, white people as well. I want to quote a few of these things that we hear there. The KKK has been representative. They help blacks. Blacks were in the Klan. Joe Biden, I skipped that one, I'm just political, I don't get into that. Another one is, they need a white man's month because they have a gay pride month. Black people are stupid voters. They don't want white people playing basketball. Basketball is for blacks. Blacks don't want white people playing the game. You can hit us every morning or something close there, too. 105.9 FM, Black Pro Media. I have sent each of you all my presentation, I've done five videos, I sent them to you all, and to the county commissioners. Baseball is for blacks only in that they talk about turning up, flag upside down, justification to prove their point about. their point about how America's fallen down because of certain people, certain merits. They talk about the NAACP was fond about four white guys, and they go much deeper than that, I'm not mentioning what they'd be saying. But that's very offensive, and I just can imagine how outsider would you Valdosta in Louds County when they hear all of this venom, and then you all sit on that station. I can't understand it. People are asking me the same question, they hit me up on YouTube, Facebook, Instagram, and my website. Why do you all do that? Also talking about queers are not dangerous, when the transvestites get mad, they kill stuff, the Democrats. Black ladies don't hate black men, and queers back promote a crazy lifestyle, perverted display. Black reparations getting to go to college in America, not in Africa. And they need to stop talking about reparations. Slaves were brought to this country to work in the factories in the north, and they were too dumb, black folk were too dumb. That's why they put them in the fields in the south. That is very distasteful, and I think somebody needs to look into it and say, no, y'all, please stop this, thank y'all very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and Counsel. Kelly Saxon, eight ball room place, Valdosta, Georgia. I talked before you with concerns, some real concerns that we're seeing more and more in the community. Just last week, we had an individual who was holding up this sign, asking for assistance for food, and has been given four citations by the same officer within the last month. $172 apiece for each citation, which equals $688. He has not robbed a store, he has not stolen food, he is simply holding this sign, asking for help. With this, he gives back to the community, with the money that he does receive. He goes to get a hotel room, gets food, whatever he needs, and able to take a bath. With this, we need to know what are the rules, where people can hold signs, and how can we stop the war on houses? We have officers who offer assistance with food and rain gear, I think we have those like the one I mentioned before. We recently had a friend who weighs about 120 pounds, was hit with a head and robbed by a two by four, had a concussion. He had, he fought hard and had a blade and was waiting for help, and someone had called the police, and they called the police, and this gentleman spent 20 days in jail for fighting back and trying to survive on the streets. Between the two school systems, we have 1,100 homeless children between our two school systems in the McKinney-Ventor Program. So the ask today, and we have literally 100 who are on the street who are homeless due to rent hikes and life circumstances. The request today is a meeting with mayor and council to discuss the ordinances and guidelines, $195,000 for housing rehab and construction in the Lila Ellis Town Town community, and then also a job fair in the annex for opportunities for the individuals who constantly ask about employment opportunities. So I ask you, what can we do to help resolve this issue and make sure that we have justice for all in our community? Not everyone is on drugs. We have school teachers who have been homeless and in hotel rooms. The hotels are packed with families living there. So I do ask, how can we resolve this issue? We can employ, with housing first, offer employment and wraparound services for our citizens who are in the, thank you.
Kelly, Kelly, if you don't mind, Chief Manahan can answer one of your questions for you tonight, as far as like where they can stand and not stand, as far as that goes, if you'll just hang out afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Counsel.
Yeah.
My name is Michael Jenner, I live at 4560 Plantation West Road, but I'm also the managing partner of Stovey's Downtown with Tim Harris, who's also here. And I wanted to say a couple of words in regards to the ordinance that you're considering, regarding the changes of the alcohol permits and such downtown, and the hopefully expansion of our entertainment district and the betterment of downtown. For a long time, we've seen a lot of inactivity downtown. It's had its good times and it's had its bad times and such. We were fortunate to be able to start this business about nine and a half years ago. We'll have our 10th anniversary very soon, at the end of the year. And all during that time, we've had all sorts of different customers come in and enjoy, bring new cigars and pipes and such, and just lounge around and happen to enjoy the evening or afternoon. But the most common question that we've had over these nine and a half years is, how come you don't serve alcohol? How come I can't get a good bourbon or good Scotch or something along that line? And then I have to go through this whole explanation of it. And the things that disappoint us probably more than anything is seeing folks come in from out of town. And there are more and more people doing that now. They're staying in our bed and breakfasts, they're staying in our hotels, they're spending money here, and they're coming to a place that they can relax and enjoy a cigar that they might have in another place in their own community. But looking at that, it is something that is offered in so many different places, and so many people love to have those at home when they're enjoying a cigar. It's a big part of, the social part of our business. We are a social business, we're not a bar, and we don't pretend to be a bar of sorts. It's a place where you can come and relax and enjoy yourself. And we hope that we can be a part of the growth of downtown by giving those folks a better chance to enjoy and relax and see another part of our community and talk to the customers that are there that live in the community and spend money in the community and tax dollars in the community, and promote our downtown, promote our city and our county. So I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? We have.
Hey, y'all, my name is Daniel Bayman, I'm here with Mackey Good Coffee, which is 101 East Central Patterson. First off, I want to thank y'all for continuing to improve our downtown entertainment district. I think that we have had great improvements over the past decade or two. And I just wanted to, while y'all have time to think before you take a vote on this, I wanted to inform you on our discussions as downtown business owners that currently own restaurants and properties within downtown. We feel that we have, the council has made great improvements through taking baby steps. We feel that the improvement of the open container and being able to walk around downtown is a great step, and we have seen very little negative impacts associated with that. The current ordinance as it presented is very vague on its enforcement and allows for a more open interpretation of businesses coming into downtown. My understanding of noise ordinances within downtown is it begins at 10:00 PM. We have concerns, and that's why the majority of the businesses downtown stay open until around 11:00 or midnight, because we have concerns associated with the ordinances, the closed living quarters, the hotels, the bed and breakfasts that are downtown. If we had businesses stay open at a later standpoint and cause noise issues. Also, we have concerns as far as the availability of police within our downtown and the ease of access to a police force or policing if that is necessary. So as Mayor Protem Andy Gibbs mentioned, y'all have the ability to change this ordinance at any time. And in my personal experience, it is always easier to create limits and restrictions at first versus to reel that back in in the future. So just my encouragement as a private business owner, I'm not speaking for the entirety of downtown, but is to do what you've done in the past, take those baby steps, see how that develops, and then take more baby steps. I think we've got a great vision for downtown, I think it's coming along, but it's going to take years to get there. And one wrong step, one wrong ordinance, one wrong enforcement, and to be honest, one bad business or negative experience can set us back from all the progress we've made. So I appreciate it, thank y'all again for everything y'all are doing, and I appreciate y'all hearing my opinion on this.
Thank you. Any, we have one more. Come on up, thank you.
Hello, everybody, Christina Cheek, I'm the founder and director of Sister Girl Referendacy. And again, like I did in March, I came and asked for the Valdosta City Council's support for Black Maternal Health Week, and I come again to you to hopefully get your support to recognize Black Breastfeeding Week, which is celebrated in August from the 25th to the 31st. And the reasons why are as follows. Valdosta Louds County has an infant mortality rate of 9%, but it's weighing too many babies that are at risk for losing their lives. Also, there are a lot of maternal health inequities, which leads to more black infants being born too small, too sick, too early, and making them more susceptible to health-related issues which cause them to lose their lives or to not have the best trajectory in their health. Also, many black residents are at risk for high visi and other nutritional-related diseases and conditions due to the lack of access to healthy food, quality healthcare, and other essential determinants of health in the communities where black babies live and are raised. Also, for the breastfeeding mothers, there are countless benefits for breastfeeding, and one of the initiatives for Sister Girl birth initiative is to highlight these so that mothers can make the best decisions and have evidence-based information to make the best decision for their babies and also for themselves. So I ask for your support again, like other, countless other cities and states across the nation who recognize Black Breastfeeding Week during the month of August, during the 21st and 25th through the 31st, along with Sister Girl Referendacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Turn it over to City Managers Report, Catherine Emmons, Assistant City Manager, will present.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We have our Main Street Christmas in July, coming up July 13th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in our downtown Valdosta. We have our infamous Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, July 17th from 2:00 to 6:00 in our Annex Multipurpose Room. Love Where You Live Road Cleanup is happening July 20th from 9:00 to 11:00. The meeting point is 607 East Park Avenue. The cleanup area they're focusing on is the Marion Street from East Park Avenue to East College Street. We have our 16th Annual Photo Contest Awards Reception at the Turner Arts Center, July 22nd from 5:00 to 7:00. And we have our very well-attended and huge back-to-school community block party on July 27th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at our Unity Park Amphitheater. And at our multi-annex room, we will also be having free haircuts for the young boys this year, so please come out and support.
Thank you, Catherine, appreciate that. Are there any council comments? Turn it over to council, Councilman Howard?
As you guys can see, our community is very diverse, that's what makes us beautiful. So there's going to be some decisions that we're going to make that everyone's not going to be happy with. It's just part of what we do. It's options, places, all over the city. I mean, there's, there's not a good time to go around with everything. If you pay attention, our budget, our budget is very conservative, price of everything is going up. Who's fault? I'm not saying who's fault it is, but we still have to bring this city, and the most supportive part about our city is our community. We got to make sure our community is taken care of. So making sure you guys have clean drinking water, police is fine. So that's where our main concerns are. With our own stretched budget, there's not a lot of wiggle room. So you guys be a hell out of us, I promise you, which are the good things we can address all of these concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Harden?
Yes, we have a lot of citizens here today, we appreciate that, we need that. The, of course, one big thing, appreciate you, Kelly, for coming up. We do have a homelessness issue still, and I know we were talking about that, I was excited, I don't, council, you know, we did push it, that this past month when we were in some balance, actually took a couple classes where we were trying to find out some more information, gather this intel on how to help our city. So it's something that we are all trying to tackle. You know, it's a big deal, we got to keep on trying to keep and help our folks, you know what I mean? Help our community, you know, especially our downtown area, you know, it's affected, it affects our downtown merchants. And we want to make sure that we can interact and thrive, and we can get folks together also to look, I'll, thank y'all for coming.
Any other council comments?
Got an objection, Mayor Protem, I make a question to your second.
All in favor?